Weaver City Council Meeting of October 8, 2012. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Will the city clerk please take role?
Mr. Reinhardt?
Here.
Mr. Starker?
Present.
Mrs. Jay?
Present.
Ms. Davis?
Present.
Mr. Stites?
Here.
Mr. Pond?
Present.
Mr. DeMott?
Here.
Mrs. Langworthy?
Here.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes of September 24, 2012?
So moved.
Second?
We have a motion to approve with second by Mr. Starker. Any changes to the minutes? Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. We have no proclamations or ceremonies tonight, so move on to citizens' right to speak is reserved for members of the public who wish to speak on any item that's not on the agenda. Speakers are allowed three minutes. Others may donate their time to the speaker at the podium for a total of nine minutes. So please step forward for public comment, and please play your last name and state your city or your address, please.
Hi, I'm Gay Porter Denilien. Porter, P-O-R-T-E-R, Denilien, D-E-N-I-L-E-O-N, at 7140 West 33rd Avenue. And I'm here as your district or at-large Cultural Commission member, and I wanted to tell you about a new series of events that we've organized and invite you to our first event. And this is called Meet the Artist. And it's an opportunity for artists within our community and businesses in the community to gather to learn more about the art-making process and get to know some of the great talent we have within our community. And our first event is next Thursday, October 18, at Katz Paul Yoga, which is on 44th and Cody, and it's from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. And it will, there'll be light refreshments. And our featured artist is Deborah Sanders, who is a glassworks artist, who has done the Birds on a Wire. If any of you have gone to the Arvada Center in the past year, her work is still showing there. I think they must have bought it. But there's, it's a series of glass birds that are perched on a wire, and they're kind of strung up along the walls. It's quite an amazing work that she's done, and she's going to talk to the people there at the reception on Thursday about her work and the process of her work. And we have two more events planned. The next one would be November 15, and that's going to be at First Bank Center. And that one features, sorry, got to get my glasses on, Patty Berry Levy, who is a photographer. And the third one will be on January 17, which is, and painter Katie Hoffman will be our featured artist then. These are all the third Thursdays of a month, so. Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else to speak on public comment on something not on the agenda? Let's say seeing none, we'll move on to approval of the agenda. Mr. Reinhardt?
I was interested in asking to postpone Agenda Item 6 until we had an opportunity to discuss it at study session. I think there's not enough information available to talk about spending that kind of money on that program to compare it to what it costs to make changes in maintenance costs. And so I'd like to see if there's a, if the rest of the council is interested in deferring that till we can talk about it.
Do I make a motion?
I'd like to move, I don't know if I say move to defer, I move to defer Item Number 6 to the next available study session.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to defer Item 6 to a study session with second by Mr. Starker. Discussion on the motion?
I guess I would just ask if there's any timing implications of, based on the current contract or the scope of work that we need to consider.
Ms. Mannwaring?
Well, based on the season and the lateness that we're getting into fall, I believe depending on when it could be scheduled on study session, we could still possibly start at the end of this year, but would carry the construction into the next spring, which may happen anyway, so.
Any other questions before we poll the council? So we have a motion to postpone Item Number 6 to a study session with second by Mr. Starker. Please poll the council on the main motion.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is public hearings and ordinances on second reading. Item 1 is Council Bill 21-2012. I'm going to open the public hearing. Mr. Stites?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 21-2012 and ordinance amending Chapter 26 concerning the creation of an industrial employment zone district. The proposed ordinance would update the city's existing light industrial zone district to become an industrial employment, i.e., zone district. The proposed changes, which are recommended by the city's comprehensive plan, include adding more modern uses to the list of permitted uses, updating the development standards for new development, and providing the opportunity to rezone directly to IE rather than requiring a planned industrial development.
Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1523.
Thank you. Do we have any staff presentation beyond the executive summary?
Yes, a brief one. Thanks, Mr. Stites, for the introduction. The origin of this ordinance was really recommendations coming out of the city's comprehensive plan on Vision Wheat Ridge that was adopted in 2009. That document recommended that we try and capture more jobs-based, primary jobs-based employment principally in our I-70 corridor, so generally, generally adjacent to or north of I-70 is the only area really in the city that we have industrial zoning or that we plan to have additional industrial zoning in the future. The plan also identified in just kind of a cursory review of our zoning code several different strategic ways to update that zoning code, several of which we've already done. There was a suggestion that there was a pretty good opportunity to update our code in terms of reflecting more modern industrial uses and building types, and also eliminating some outdated language in there, just related to the fact that hadn't been looked at in over 40 years. So that's really what we're intending to do here. The industrial zoning, which is being proposed to become the industrial employment zoning, really represents a fairly small portion of the city. It's about 2% of our land within the city. There is an additional 4% of the land that's zoned PID, Planned Industrial District. Again, all that is generally speaking in that I-70 corridor. As noted, and I can talk just a little bit more about this, but one of the things that we're proposing is that property owners would be able to rezone from PID to this new IE, and we think there's some real good advantages potentially in that. As noted by Mr. Stites, the proposed code revisions really relate to three areas. As I already mentioned, changes to the use groups, the use charts, making a number of what are currently special uses, making them permitted uses, eliminating some archaic language, and adding some language to reflect some more modern types of industrial uses. In terms of development standards, which would really be the second area of where we're developing the code, generally, we're doing things that are more, that are less restrictive. So by way of example, we're going from a minimum landscape coverage of 20% to 15% in our review of other jurisdictions. We think that's more similar to what other jurisdictions do for industrial land uses, and obviously, a little bit of a lesser requirement for the developers trying to build on industrial land. And we think it's more appropriate for how much landscape you need in that type of an industrial environment. We also are modifying some setbacks, generally, again, reducing those fairly significantly to align with some of the recommendations that we've included in the recently updated Architectural and Site Design Manual. So lastly, and perhaps most significantly, we are proposing that a property owner who currently, if they wish to rezone from, say, agriculture to an industrial zone district, they have to do it through that planned industrial development, the ODP requirement, multiple public hearings before city council. That can be a cumbersome process. It can certainly be a time-consuming and expensive process. We believe that with the recent modifications that we've made to the Architectural and Site Design Manual, if you'll recall, we added a whole section on heavy commercial and industrial building types. So we feel like we've got some really solid design standards in terms of material requirements, outside screening requirements, et cetera, to get a reasonably good quality of industrial development. So we feel like we have that backup, and we don't need that planned industrial public hearing process to essentially negotiate out better design. We think we have the standards in place that'll get us the design that we desire. So we are recommending approval of the ordinance, obviously, and do believe that it's very consistent with our comprehensive plan.
Thank you. Move on to public comment. Do we have anybody here to speak on Item 1, Council Bill 21-2012? Seeing none, we'll move on to council discussion and questions. Mr. DeMott?
I would like to say, I did have some doubts about this, and I read this thing inside and out. I just got to say, there's a lot of good work and some good foresight that went into that area, which is my neighborhood. And, you know, it really does fit well. It actually eases up quite a bit on some of the streetscape and the site design plans that really do fit in with a good industrial development. And just one question that I had was, does it, is there still a special use permit process for something that, does this eliminate a special use permit process, not necessarily in this area, but in any area?
The special use permit is still in the zoning codes. There are still uses that require that special use process, both under the industrial employment zoning, as well as all zoning districts have some uses that are special use.
Yeah, it didn't seem to, so I just wanted to make sure. But other than that, I think this is good work. Thanks.
Any other questions? Can I close the public hearing? And a motion's in order?
I move to approve Council Bill Number 21-2012 and ordinance amending Chapter 26 concerning the creation of an industrial employment zone district, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve Item Number 1. It was seconded by Mr. Reinhardt and Mr. DeMott. Please poll the council.
Mr. Davis?
Thank you.
Okay. Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Item 2 is Council Bill Number 22-2012. I'm going to open the public hearing. And Mr. Pond?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Council Bill Number 22-2012, an ordinance amending Chapter 26 concerning the review process for public schools. The city's zoning code requires a special use permit for public and private schools in all residential zone districts, agricultural zone districts, and in the neighborhood commercial, restricted commercial, and commercial one districts. Prior to a new school opening in one of these zone districts, the applicant is required to complete the SUP process. An SUP is also required if an expansion beyond the size of the originally approved school is proposed. The state of Colorado adopted legislation about the siting and construction of public and charter schools codified in Section 22-32-124 of the Colorado Revised Statutes. According to the city attorney, the city's current requirement for an SUP for public charter school, public or charter school, is in conflict with this state law. The proposed ordinance would update the review process for public schools so that it conforms to Colorado law.
Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1524.
Thank you. Do we have any staff presentation beyond the executive summary?
I'll be very brief. This issue of compliance with state statutes for SUPs came to our attention recently when we were informing the property owner of this, a school operator, of the fact that our code requires the special use permit to be approved prior to locating a charter school or expanding a charter school. In this case, it was an expansion of a proposed expansion of a charter school. So that individual questioned our ability to impose that requirements, and it caused us to revisit the issue with our attorney's office. We're certainly aware that state law opposes certain limitations on how municipalities can regulate public schools, and that does include charter schools. Upon review of the state law and the case law that's been decided over the course of the last several years, the city attorney did determine that our SUP, our special use permit process, was in conflict with state law and required too much review process, inconsistent with state statutes. So the cleanup in terms of our code amendments is fairly straightforward. We get rid of the special use permit process for all schools, including charter schools. I would note that we, that's as far as we go, though. We'd still keep that special use permit process in place for trade schools, for private schools, and for colleges and universities. So we've, we've kind of opened up or done as little as we could to the existing code to comply with the statutes, but also keeping that process in place for those other institutions that, in our opinion, can have fairly significant neighborhood impact in terms of traffic, level of activity, parking, et cetera. So that's been our approach on the ordinance.
Thank you. Any questions from council, comments? Mr. Reinhardt?
Is there any public?
Oh, no, there's nobody, is anybody here that's, can I, Number 2, public hearing?
Okay. Mr. Johnson, I note that we keep the site plan review process, but what would trigger that if you had a school simply, you know, well, take a look at the case we had where the church wanted to add a school within their existing facility. There would be no trigger for a review of that application we had last, a few months ago for the one up on whatever it is, 29, right? There would not be a review of that. There's no other trigger to the site plan.
Correct. Site plan is the only review. The city attorney did determine that we could still use that site plan process, and how we would intend to use that, and how we have with the Mountain Phoenix, the school on the frontage road west of Kipling that brought this issue to our attention. We've evaluated their access into the site. We've referred that application to CDOT since the access is off of their highway facility or their frontage road. CDOT has, and the city have both reviewed a traffic impact study to evaluate whether any kind of improvements are necessary from that perspective. So that's kind of the manner in which we're using the site plan review process.
They were constructing an additional physical space?
They were, they were expanding the capacity of the school through portables.
If there was no change in the physical capacity, in the physical circumstances, the addition of a charter school to an existing scenario would not trigger any city review?
Correct.
Okay. That's what, thank you.
You're welcome. Any other questions? Mr. Johnson, this does apply to private schools still, though, right?
The SUP process still applies to private schools, yes.
Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing. A motion's in order.
Thank you. I move to approve Council Bill Number 22-2012 and ordinance amending Chapter 26 concerning the review process for public schools, and that take effect 15 days after final publication.
Second.
We have a motion to approve Item 2, with second by Mr. Stites. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Item 3 is Council Bill 24-2012. I'm going to open the public hearing. Ms. Langworthy?
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. Council Bill Number 24-2012, an ordinance amending Chapter 21-107 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to permit waiver of insurance requirements for certain long-term right-of-way permits. At issue, the existing ordinance allows right-of-way use permits to be used for a maximum time of five years, and requires that property owners provide evidence of insurance while right-of-way use permits are in force. Some of the right-of-way use permits, which are routinely reissued, authorize semi-permanent improvements, such as fences, walls, et cetera. The proposed amendment to the city code would allow such long-term permits to be issued without a defined termination date. The proposed ordinance amendment would continue to require city indemnification for long-term right-of-way use permits, but would not require that insurance certificates be provided to the city. Long-term permits would also be recorded against the affected properties to ensure that future owners are aware of the permits.
Thank you. Will the city clerk please assign an ordinance number?
This will be ordinance number 1525.
Thank you. Do we have any staff presentation beyond the executive summary?
None, Your Honor.
Move on to the public. Do we have anybody here to speak on Item Number 3? Mr. Abbott, do you want to talk on Item 3? Okay. Move on to council discussion on Item 3? I know it's riveting material. Is Ms. Langworthy, or Ms. Joy?
Oh, I'll grunt something over here. Tim, you and I spoke about that, under this ordinance, that we would no longer need insurance certification because of the long-term allowance, the long-time permit. And I was curious as to why that was different from a short-term.
What we've done is drafted, the city attorneys drafted the actual permit agreement, and the agreement has language which is, has very strong indemnification language within that, and we're going to be able to use that as our protection versus the short terms. And the short-term permits are sometimes used for things like dumpsters that need to be placed out in the street for a week or so while they're doing some work. So there's an application for each kind of a permit, and with the short-term ones, it's a lot easier, and the property owner doesn't want to go through the process of encumbering the property long-term. And so it's easier for them to just provide us the insurance certificate to ensure that they have insurance for that short-term need.
Is that an insurance that's separate from their homeowner's insurance? Is it a separate sort of a policy?
No, it's not. What they need to do is they go back to their insurance company, and they have the insurance company issue, reissue the policy with the city as an additional insured. So it's just a...
Right, specifically to the...
Well, they just, they just, they just add the city as a policy holder for that short period of time.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions or comments for the council? I'm going to close the public hearing, and a motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 24-2012 and ordinance amending Chapter 21-107 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws to permit waiver of insurance requirements for certain long-term right-of-way permits on second reading, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve Item 3, with second by Mr. Starker. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is ordinances on first reading. The purpose of first reading is to set the date and time of the public hearing for the ordinance. Amendments are allowed on first reading, and public comment is not allowed on first reading for council rules. So move on to Item Number 4, is Council Bill Number 25-2012. Mr. Reinhardt?
Yes, I'd like to introduce Council Bill Number 25-2012, an ordinance amending Section 5-45 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning certain escrow agreements as security for public improvements. The city code requires construction of certain public improvements as a condition of a building per issuance. Governing ordinance was amended in late 2000, eliminating the need for escrows to ensure construction of any required improvements. Escrows currently held for commercial and industrial building permits are to be retained indefinitely. The proposed ordinance would allow the refunding of all escrows associated with public improvements that have not been constructed within 10 years. Is the motion in order?
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Council Bill Number 25-2012, an ordinance amending Section 5-45 of the Wheat Ridge Code of Laws concerning certain escrow agreements as security for public improvements on first reading, ordered published, public hearing set for Monday, October 22, 2012, at 7:00 p.m. in the city council chambers, and that it take effect 15 days after final publication.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion to approve Item Number 4, with second by Mr. DeMott. Please poll the council.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is decisions, resolutions, and motions. Item 5 is Resolution Number 50-2012. Ms. Jay?
Item 5. The Arts Council, Arts Council, let me, let me give you the heading here. Recommendation of the, Resolution Number 50-2012, a resolution approving the recommendation of the Cultural Commission to accept a bronze fox sculpture donated by the Arts Council of Wheat Ridge. The Arts Council of Wheat Ridge would like to donate a bronze fox sculpture to the city of Wheat Ridge. The Cultural Commission recommends that city council approve the acceptance of a bronze fox sculpture.
Motion's in order.
I move to approve Resolution Number 50-2012, a resolution approving the recommendation of the Cultural Commission to accept a bronze fox sculpture donated by the Arts Council of Wheat Ridge.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion for approval, Item 5, with second by Mr. Starker and Ms. Langworthy. Did anybody want to speak on our public comment? Please step forward. Now, please play your last name for the record, and you...
My name's Tom Abbott, at 10780 West 35th Avenue. Well, I want to speak in favor of Number 5, and my fellow board members, including my wife, who's bashful, I guess, back in the back. And this is Don McDougall, and Diane McDougall, who are all board members on the Arts Council of Wheat Ridge, which formed several years ago, and Ms. Shaver, Janelle Shaver is also on the board. We formed years ago, and had a lot of events in Wheat Ridge to raise the money that eventually allowed us to purchase the fox. And we had Taste of Wheat Ridge a couple of years, and there were all sorts of things, Christmas events and things like that. So it all culminated, and we had some money, and wanted to spend it instead of having just a Christmas club with it ongoing forever. So we all voted to hire a local artist, Bonnie Trujillo Dixon, to come up with a sculpture for us, and looking at some drawings and ideas, we selected a fox, because, of course, they're so common here in Wheat Ridge. So then we started through the process, and of the Cultural Commission, which was very helpful. Ms. Mannwaring helped us a lot from Parks and Rec. I met with Parks and Rec out here to select the site, and orientation of the fox, and all these sorts of things. It's an absolutely beautiful sculpture. You're going to love it when you see it. It's an oversized fox, probably about this high, and she has two kits, and will be just a perfect accent for our new entrance, which we're very thrilled to see a new front door coming on our city hall here. It's just going to be terrific. So we wanted to thank the city for accepting the fox and allowing us to have it placed in such a prominent location right here in front of city hall, and everyone that's helped us along the way to accomplish this. So thank you very much for making the motion tonight, and we look forward to, the fox is up at the foundry right now, and so we're all looking forward to it coming back and see the actual sculpture, and then getting it placed on a large boulder out in this new area by where the cars park at the front door. So, is anything else from the board here?
Excuse me. Don McDougall, 9815 West 37th Avenue, Wheat Ridge. I just want...
M A C, capital D O U G A L L.
Well, thank you very much for coming, and thank you very much for all the work you've done.
I just wanted to thank the mayor for recognizing that I might not know what I'm speaking on. About six months, I showed up without my hearing aids and sat through the agenda item that I wanted to speak on, so he's catching me now. Thank you.
Thanks, Don. All right, Tom. Okay, we have a motion to approve item number five, it was seconded. Any discussion on item five?
I think it's kind of exciting we're going to have a foxy lady in right in front of us.
I knew you were going to say that.
I couldn't resist. I didn't want to resist.
Do you have an idea of when this will be available? When the fox is going to show up, do you know?
Do you know when the foundry will be done with the statue?
Not exactly, no. I understand it's to be soon.
You go ahead and get to the mic, Mr. Abbott, because people at home can't hear.
Well, we don't have an exact schedule, because the artist hasn't given us the schedule, but she told us that she took it up to the foundry last week. We've written a check, so we're going to be watching for it and certainly hope that it's up there pretty soon. It has to be coordinated with the overall project, so that's the timetable.
Thank you. Please follow the council on item five.
Motion carries eight zero.
Thank you. Congratulations to the Arts Council and all the work that you put into it. So item six was postponed, so that concludes our agenda for this evening. We move on to city managers' matters.
No city manager matters.
City attorneys' matters?
None tonight, thanks.
City clerks' matters?
I actually have two things. One, you probably aren't aware of this, but there's an election coming up. No. Tomorrow is the last day to register to vote, so if there's any folks out there that aren't registered, tomorrow's your last day. The other thing that I wanted to kind of announce to the public, and council's been, gotten some handouts on this, in people who live in the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District, there is an error on your ballot. There was just some problem out at the county, and actually what it is, it's an Edgewater Fire Protection District question. Edgewater is putting before its citizens the question of whether to just close up shop for the Edgewater Fire Department and become part of the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District. They've been, they've been in business for 100 years, that fire district, and, but their facility is small, and it would require a very, very large mill levy increase to get their building and their equipment and training up to acceptable standards for these days. So they're putting that before the Edgewater voters. Well, somehow, because they're going to become part of the Wheat Ridge Fire District, it got listed as a Wheat Ridge Fire District issue, and it's not. We don't vote on that if you're in the Wheat Ridge Fire Protection District. But when they found out, it was already too late to get it off of the ballot. So the county is going to be, you will see when you get your ballot in the mail, if you get a mail-in ballot, there will be a letter in there explaining all of this. And what will happen is, if you should happen to vote on that, it just, it won't count it. It's irrelevant. This is, if you're going to have a mistake, this is probably a good one, because even if people do go ahead and vote, it's not going to matter, because they're not going to count it. It's just irrelevant. But we don't want people to be confused, so we're trying to get the word out as much as possible to tell folks, you don't have to vote on that issue. So don't be confused, and hopefully we'll limit the, reduce the amount of calls to city hall questioning about, or to the fire district, asking, well, what's the issue with the fire district? And it isn't. It isn't our issue. It's Edgewater's. So just ignore it. So no problem. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. You know, in a market system, competition is, comes out of a market system. I wanted to show everybody this new flyer from the 44th Avenue Shops that's been passed out to the council. It's called 44th, shop44th.com. It's been produced and created by the business owners and somewhat of a business group on 44th Avenue. It lists all the businesses on the back that are on 44th Avenue, and has a great logo, the wheat. And I was going to ask Mr. Demott to maybe talk about it a little bit under city council matters. Mr. Demott, do you want to talk about this great new...
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, first of all, I'd like to thank Heidi at Swiss Flowers, who has really volunteered her time, and she even paid for the printing of these cards. She really had a proactive vision in bringing together and showcasing all of the businesses on 44th Avenue, and really our entire enterprising district of number four. She has put together this beautiful flyer, which will be available at all the businesses up and down the street. And there's also a website, shop44th.com, that you can go. If you see any businesses on here that you'd like to go to that you don't see, please get on there or give somebody a call, and we'll make sure they get all on here. And looking at this, there's a whole list. This is, this is 48th Avenue. It's sort of a map, all the way from Ward Road to Harland Street. There's a couple of good-looking Italian places on here, if you're hungry. But if you have time, stop by some of the businesses, and especially stop by Swiss Flowers and thank Heidi for all of her time in putting something like this together.
Thank you, Joe. And then chief acting city manager, talking to Heidi, they would like to see if the city would allow this logo to be put on the bus shelters on 44th Avenue and those advertising spots that are currently on the bus shelters, the new ones. And so they've contacted myself and Steve. I was just wondering if you could follow through and see if those bus shelters are available for this marketing logo in certain locations on 44th. Council may have to approve that, but they were looking to have, this is sort of more advertising for their street on 44th.
We'll get with staff, and we'll look into it and report back to you.
Thanks. Thank you. Move on to, Mr. Demott, do you have anything else?
Nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Reinhardt?
Not tonight, thank you.
Thanks. Mr. Pond?
Nothing else tonight, thanks.
Thanks. Ms. Jay?
Nothing, thank you.
Ms. Langworthy?
I want to say something, just because everybody said, no, thank you, but...
Just don't say, oh, yeah, like Mr. Stein.
I don't, I would never even go to, I guess I'd like to, I would like to thank Mike Stites and George Pond. They did come and attend the Prospect Valley Walk to School Day. They were there very early, and it was, it was much appreciated. And if there were any other schools out in Wheat Ridge that did a Walk to School Day, I would like to thank them as well.
Thank you. Mr. Starke?
Only to reiterate what our treasurer said earlier today, that tomorrow's the last day to register to vote, an important election coming up, and I hope all of our citizens will avail themselves of this opportunity. Thank you. Yes, the clerk, not the treasurer, sorry.
Larry, did you change jobs? Mr. Stites?
Oh, yeah. Thanks, Joey. I thought the only street in Wheat Ridge was 38th Avenue. This is a good reminder that there's 44th down there. Would be a great time to relocate your business or home to Wheat Ridge. If you need any help, check with one of us or staff. Positive thing this month, you know, check with your neighbors, see if they need anything. You know, I was thinking the other day, if you know your neighbors, you know, in the neighborhood, you might go together and buy one snowboard and, you know, do all the walks. It may be, you know, depends upon your neighborhood, but it may cost you, you know, 20, 30, 40 dollars, but it might be a good way to get your walks cleaned. And as always, please try to find and buy at Wheat Ridge. Thank you.
Try to find and buy on 38th and 44th, so, we're adjourned.